Okay, it is six o'clock. We're going to bring this meeting to order. Planning Commission meeting, February 26, 2020. We've got five items on the agenda. Every item that is marked within asterisks, which this week is all of them, will be going to the Provo City Council for further action. We will start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance by Robert Knudsen. So if everybody could stand, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, starting on my left, we're going to have roll call.
Lisa Jensen, I have no conflicts.
Mari Orkiaga, no conflicts.
Maria Wynden, no conflict.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Thank you. Okay, as I mentioned, we've got five items on the agenda. We are going to move item five up to number two so that Mr. Taylor does not have to stay all the way to the end of the meeting since he's presenting both items for us tonight. So the first item that we are hearing, item one. The Community and Neighborhood Services Department requests an ordinance amendment to section fifteen dot twenty dot zero nine zero of the Provo City Code relating to parking lot landscaping. The request seeks to increase the minimum canopy coverage and landscaping arrangement within new parking areas. This will be a citywide application. Mr. Taylor.
Thanks. And I wanted to put the items close together because they both deal with parking. I always watch these things on YouTube, so it doesn't matter if I'm here or not. Just wanted to say that. So what this does, this changes the code for landscaping in parking lots. Currently, it's difficult for a developer to understand what's required of them. When it's calculating how many trees have to be in a parking lot, what it says in the current code is that you have to have 6% of the surface area being landscaped, and then of that 6%, for every 120 square feet, it has to have a tree. So we're just making it simple, saying one tree per three parking spaces. And then what that do would give a 50% tree canopy coverage. So if you look at this PowerPoint, I'll show some examples of what this does. First off, it's no secret that temperatures are rising. And this is a heat island map of Provo over the last two years in the summer. And the hottest areas are the most pink. And if you look at areas that are paved, they tend to be the hottest. I would highlight the mall in East Bay, some of the shopping centers in East Bay, the runway at the airport. These all have big asphalt pieces of land. And so what happens is the sun hits it, the asphalt absorbs heat, and it keeps that area hot overnight as well. So it never cools down as it should. And then if you look at areas like BYU or South Joaquin, North Mazer, where there are very big, mature trees, those areas tend to be a lot cooler as well. And so what we would hope to do with this is cool down the parking lots. I talked about what the current code says. It's not only is it a little bit difficult to decipher, but also it requires more plants in the landscaped area than what our normal landscaping code requires. And so that it prevents xeriscaping, it prevents local scaping. So there's more plants on there. It also requires curbing. And what curbing does, it prevents the water from flowing into the plants, which is a natural drainage feature that you'd actually want. This is what the current code is producing. So you can see the curbing around the asphalt, making it so when it rains, the water doesn't go into the plants, but instead it goes into the pipes. And then as well, large pieces of asphalt with no trees. And so it gets very hot in these areas. So I talked about the proposed code. Not only does it increase the number of trees, it allows for xeriscaping, and it gives a visual depiction of what the shape of the landscaping should be. So on the very bottom, the illustrations, the two ones on the left are allowed already, but they're described in text rather than in visuals. I thought the visuals would be easier for developers to understand. Then the one on the right with the diamonds is a new type of, a new shape of landscaping that will be allowed, that maximizes the number of parking spaces and allows the same number of trees. Here is an example. In Kentucky, you have a parking lot that's basically a forest. I mean, who wouldn't want to park their car there? It's absolutely beautiful. Notice there's no curbing as well. And so as the rain falls, the water goes into the vegetated surface, and it waters the plants, which not only is good for the plants, but it also filters the stormwater so that we're not getting oils and polluted chemicals from cars in the Provo River. It's filtering through into the groundwater instead. And another example of a parking lot in Italy, a car factory Fiat. And this is the changes in the code. Any questions? That's a lot, I'm sorry.
I have a brief question, I think, Mr. Taylor. I think you would say, would you not, that this gives developers more flexibility, more options, other than the specificity with regard to the trees? I mean, it gives them a lot more flexibility in their designs.
Yeah, so the flexibility it gives them is, like I said, that diamond, the new diamond shape of tree planting. You can maximize, you can put more parking spaces per square feet of land. So that's one area flexibility gives them. Another is it no longer requires curbing around it. And then the third is it allows for xeriscaping for the landscaped area. So it does give them more flexibility.
Mr. Knudsen.
I have a question about the no curbing. How do you keep people from running over the trees when they're small?
So in...
General problem with the whole thing, but I just see that it's an added expense because you're adding more trees that have got to be fertilized, have got to be watered, have got to be trimmed, have got to be pruned. You've got to have people pick up the leaves. To me, it just seems like you're burdening people with more expense. And I don't know that you're really reducing the temperature. Maybe you are theoretically, but people are still going to go into the parking lot and turn on their air conditioning in the car. It's not going to stop people from not idling their car, not using their air conditioning. I just can't understand what it's supposed... I mean, it looks pretty, but is it feasible? Is it practical?
So your question was, with no curbing, are people going to run over trees?
Right, especially at night.
Yeah. So the landscaping code specifies the trunk diameter of tree that has to go in. It's a minimum of two inches. And at that point, trees that I have seen with two-inch caliber diameter are six, seven feet tall. I mean, these aren't things that you're going to miss. They're pretty well-developed already.
So does Provo produce our own trees, or do we have to buy all these trees?
So is...
We have our own facility. I know they used to have a facility where they actually grew trees.
Yeah, the city purchase... This is for public space. This is for street side and parks. The city purchases trees from nurseries. Yeah. But this piece of code would apply not only to publicly owned property, but private property. And so they're probably purchasing from nurseries as well. And it's pretty common for nurseries to have up to seven-inch caliber trees.
Yes, Ms. Jensen.
I had a question about the xeriscate ground cover. So it's in your overview, it's number four. Allow for xeriscate ground cover in landscaped areas, lowering the amount of vegetated surface required from 50 to 25%. So basically, you're saying we're not requiring them to have as many shrubs and other things planted. But when you say xeriscate ground cover, are you just saying now we can have rocks, kind of like they do on the freeway in Las Vegas? Or what are you envisioning as xeriscate ground cover there?
Yeah, so the landscaping code describes what xeriscaping is. And it can be rocks, it can be mulch, anything but bare dirt.
Okay.
And so the remaining 75... So you've got 25% minimum that would be shrubs or bushes. The remaining could be rocks, could be mulch, could be bark.
Does that negate the cooling effect of not having asphalt?
So remember, there's still going to be a tree covering this. There's a canopy that covers this.
You don't have to plant underneath it.
Yeah, so the 25% is the ground cover, right? It's not the trees.
I'm wondering if you have any feedback from developers on this? Has it gone to any sort of open house or anything like that that anyone's commented on?
I haven't talked with developers on it, no.
I had a couple of questions. What about upper floors of parking garages?
As far as I know, they're exempt from this. I haven't seen any. Of all the parking garages that have been built, landscaping code has been in place, and there hasn't been any vegetation on them.
Is that... What is that due to? Is that due to added weight or just... I realize it's just the way our city code is written right now, but is that something that could be looked into?
I mean, it could be. So green roofs are... New Skin has a green roof. There's green roofs in Salt Lake City, so it's something that could be done. We don't require it as of right now.
Okay. And then I had another question. I apologize for not having been able to research each one of the trees. But I did look up about half of them. And of the half that I did look up, I noticed that there were a couple that had berries, or at least it seemed like they had berries. Perhaps there's another variety that I Googled exactly the name that was written here. And so it appeared that they had berries. And they're... And also, there's one that seemed that it had a preponderance of yellow pollen, which, I mean, it was a beautiful tree, gorgeous. But I imagine that a lot of people are not going to want to park underneath it when it's in bloom. Also, a couple of... Or let's see. A couple of them seem to just grow upright. They seem to have a very upright shape and not so much of spreading out, giving shade. And having been born and raised in Florida, let me tell you, the parking spots that are under those trees, under the shade trees, those are the first ones that are taken, no matter how far out in the parking lot they are. The trees in parking lots are the coveted spots.
Yeah.
And so I realized that, you know, when the sun's out at zenith, you know, you're not going to get much shade as the sun progresses in the sky. Well, the sun doesn't move, but y'all know what I mean. That the shade will increase, but it didn't seem like there was going to be much shade provided. Perhaps on the trees I didn't research, there was more shade.
Yeah, so I went straight to the best source for this list of trees. Provo City has someone whose full-time job it is to know trees and to maintain our trees with its crew. That's Chaz Addis. He's the city forester in Provo Power. And I asked him, I said, "Chaz, I want you to give me a list of the trees that grow best in our climate in harsh places like parking lots and trees that will provide good shade in these parking lots." And so he gave me this list. I said, "Give me as many as possible so we give developers flexibility on what they can choose." And, you know, when you're contacting nurseries, they're not going to have all of these at the same time. And so we want to give them options. And so this is the list that he gave me, and I trust his expertise on it.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Jensen.
I had the exact same concern. Almost every one of those trees is a pollen dropper or a berry dropper. So I would just say, not that we don't like the list, but that maybe we could find a few more trees and encourage them to not... My husband's car comes home from work every day covered in sticky pollen because the little leaf linden pollen that drops on it, or the honey locusts. So anyway, just something to consider. I don't think it's a deal breaker for me, but it's just if we want people to... If we want to produce shade in parking lots, and then we create a parking lot that nobody wants to park in because their car will be... Look like a bunch of birds flew over it when they're done. That's, I feel like, counterproductive. And then I just had two things in the proposed language. So on section... Three A two, is that right? Where it says, "Landscape islands parallel to the parking spaces shall be required." It almost seemed like you were going to say something more after it, and it wasn't complete. It was kind of awkward wording. Because it feels... I felt like what you were trying to do was saying, "Here's one, two, and three options." And on the second option, it just didn't seem like a complete... "Or you could do this," or, I don't know. Maybe that was just me. So it's just maybe to look at that and make sure it says what you wanted to say. And then on the third section, landscape diamonds, it says that these are required when neither landscape strips nor islands are feasible. So is that really what you want? You want it to be a last resort? Or do you want them to actually have equal weight on all three options to choose from? Because the wording makes it look, sound like it's a last resort option.
Yeah, we do want that to be a last resort because the more space that you give trees to grow, then the bigger they're going to get.
So it would constrict the trees. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the wording on those was intentional and not accidental.
Do we have current tree requirements for stuff like this?
There, for parking lot landscaping, I don't believe there's a list of approved trees. From what I know, they can choose from anything that goes well in this climate.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Yakwa.
Yeah, I'm thinking, what if a developer were to come and want to do, instead of trees, some sort of umbrella-type structure that would do equal amounts of shade, but wouldn't require the same kind of upkeep?
So is the question, is that allowed right now? Or would that replace the tree requirement?
Yeah, I'm just curious as to... Certainly, making something more shady is a good idea. But I'm just thinking of people who might be trying to think outside the box for ways of improving that.
Yeah, so I know carports are allowed. People can build shaded parking structures. I see them at the Provo Housing Authority lot by where I live. They've done that. This doesn't give any... This... Having that wouldn't replace the tree requirement in this code?
Ms. Jensen.
I just had a thought that was related to that. When you asked about the parking garages and whether they have the same requirements, and then the carports, if our goal is to try and reduce the urban heat island effect, then having a metal or concrete structure providing shade is still going to have the heat coming from that. And the parking garage, if the requirement is 50% shade coverage, and it's at least two levels, then you automatically have 50% shade coverage. So in the parking garage itself, it's mitigated the effect for the trees. Anyway, those are just some thoughts about questions earlier.
Any other questions for staff?
I'm wondering if maybe with the list of trees that we should use, if we should make a list of trees that are prohibited in Provo.
Question. So as far as I know, the language says only those trees. Yeah, it says, "Only the following shall be planted." So what it's saying is the rest of them are not allowed. And it says, "Unless otherwise approved by the city forester." So if someone's coming in, they have a good case that, you know, this tree's going to grow well here, and they get it approved by the city forester, it can go in, but nothing else is allowed. It's not on the list.
Anybody else? Okay, we will now turn this over for public comment. Are there any neighborhood chairs that would like to comment on this first? Seeing none, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Oh, sorry.
My name's Sharon Ma... Excuse me, I wasn't planning to speak until I saw the last illustration with the diamonds in there. And I don't know... I haven't gotten to read it, so I don't know. Having no curbing would help the diamond situation, except, as you pointed out, the trees might get run over. But having a largish vehicle that I have to park occasionally, I have to avoid those diamond-shaped ones because we don't fit, or we stick out the end. And I have a medium-sized vehicle, and I've had some of those parking spaces also be too small for even a sedan. So I don't know if you could remove one so you could have a full-size parking space in there? I don't know. But I love more trees. I'm not opposed to that at all, but we have to kind of keep that in mind. I don't know how you regulate that in the country. And I don't know how you regulate that in the code.
So with that last illustration with the diamonds, it doesn't specify that it has to be every couple rows like it shows in there. The only requirement is that there has to be 50% tree canopy coverage. So if the developer can somehow, you know, move them around to a spot and get this, still get the 50% tree canopy coverage, that's all we care about. We're not specifying where it's placed inside of the parking lot.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to make any comments? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the commission. Are there any other comments or questions for staff?
Well, question. Is this patterned off any other city's plan? This is in use somewhere? Something like this?
Yeah. I looked at a bunch of different cities. Some of them say one tree per two parking spaces. Some of them, Portland got really specific. They said, "If you're having large trees, you can do one per four. Medium trees, one per three. Small trees, one per two." Some cities say one per four. So we, I calculated out what the tree canopy spread is of these trees that Chaz gave me, and then what the square footage is of parking spaces. And I found that one per three would give us a 50% coverage in about 20 years for most of these trees, so I felt that was a good amount to put in.
And if a tree dies in the midpoint, somehow they're supposed to replace it? Or you would, you would hope they would do that?
Yeah, I don't know of code that requires that.
I don't want to be too specific. I think that's counterproductive.
I'm sure if someone cares about their property, they'd want to do that.
So there isn't any requirement, if a tree gets hit, knocked over, or when it ages and dies, there's no requirement for the developer, for the property owner, to replace the tree? So in, what, 20 years? I don't, what's the average lifespan for most of these trees?
All right, that depends greatly on the trees. In Provo, we've got trees that are 100 years old, and a lot of it depends on the species and where they're being planted. Trees in parking lots tend to not live as long as 100 years, you know, maybe 30, 40, 50.
I think if they're getting a plan approved, and they go through all the process to get it, and they actually have to sink a tree in the well, that in itself is a limiting factor. It's not a guarantee, never will be. But, you know, in a parking lot, probably would work. I don't know.
So Bill just showed me a part of city code that does require that the trees are replaced. This is 15200702. It says that landscaping shall be maintained in good condition to present a healthy need and order to the appearance, and shall be replaced when necessary.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Jensen?
I have a devil's advocate question. So in one of your findings, you have the shade trees have a cooling effect of up to 10 degrees Fahrenheit in parts of Provo. So the question that I have here is, we also live in a desert, so is the water that is then required to take care of these trees and to help them flourish greater, a greater use than the cooling effect that would come from them? That's just something maybe we just need to consider. If we're going to ask people to turn Provo into Portland, then we need to, we need to pay attention to the water demands that that would require.
So, so most of the street trees that our city puts in, once they reach maturity, they live off what's naturally falling from our clouds and what's naturally in the ground. So in front of my house are some flowering pear trees, and they're probably at least 50 years old. I never water them. They do extremely well. And this list of trees that Chaz gave me, these are the kinds that he knows they're hardy, they're going to survive, because they do well in our climate here with the rainfall that we get.
Okay. Did you have something?
No, I, you know, I have mixed feelings. Anytime you put a regulation in, you're chipping away at someone's opportunity. On the other hand, I think the offset for my concerns about the tree, and I think generally the number of trees is probably about right. I wouldn't have any hard knowledge. But I think the flexibility in the parking that you can get from this is a good thing. So I think overall, it's probably a step in more liberating. Hope I'm right.
Any other comments? More question? Okay.
So how does this rule pertain to something like the hospital? If they're, or BYU, if they're a public facility, do they, are they required to adhere to the same landscaping requirements? So over time, over redevelopment time, it would pertain to everyone?
Sir Yagwa.
Yeah. I like a lot of things about it. I'm a little bit concerned about the trashy nature of many of these trees. I understand they're hardy, but the point of avoiding those spots because it messes up your car, I'm, I kind of like to see a list of trees that would not be that way, or if there are even any, that, because I have a honey locust in my backyard. It's a great tree, but it, well, it drops leaves and pollen, and it drops all the time and sticks and all of the other kinds of things. And others of those would do similar kinds of things. And so that, the restriction of the trees to pretty much a list of trees that are problematic in that way is a little bit concerning. I don't know if there's, I mean, the forester might have other ideas, but I think that list is not a great list in terms of what parkers would like.
Mr. Knetzen?
Yeah, this, the second way you say, it seems like some of the trees that would be very desirable, like maybe maples, they're so slow-growing that you wonder if they would ever, ever reach maturity in the time. But I don't know. That would be up to someone who studies those kind of trees. But it seems like there could be some, some trees that I think are very desirable that aren't on this list. They're not even close to being on this list. So...
Maybe we should, maybe we should see what other list, get a second opinion on the list of trees and see if we can expand it.
I, I love this concept. I absolutely, I'm in favor of cooling down parking lots and at the same time adding more trees to, to Provost, to any community. I wish that I had been able to research every tree, to know its properties. But the ones that I did research, I have reservations about. They're beautiful trees, but I, I think that customers or patrons of a store or office would tend to complain if they're parking under the tree. I think it's, might end up defeating the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish, and I would hate for that to happen. I think this is a great idea. I don't know if there's a way we can go back to the City Forester and, and see if there are other trees that don't drop. I think I remember seeing a city ordinance that don't allow trees with berries to be planted in, in the, in the section, in this area between the sidewalk and the street, so they don't make a mess on the sidewalk. I might be wrong on that. But, you know, if that's an issue for sidewalks, I think it would be an issue in parking lots. Again, I love this, and I'm totally in favor of this idea. I would like to see some different options, tree options. Was this the extensive list?
Yeah, so I'll talk about my conversation that I had with Chaz. He's the City Forester. At first I said, "Give me a list of trees." And then I think he gave me five or six. And I said, "We want to offer developers some more flexibility." And so then he gave me more. He gave me this full list. And, and he knows trees, so I trust him on that.
Well, I don't know trees. I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate that I think it is a good concept. I like that. I'm wondering if we can recommend that the list of trees be reconsidered and that...
Bring it back in a month.
Well, either bring it back or approve it with that caveat that it needs to, maybe it needs to be brought back.
Well, we're, we're trying to be deliberative, and I think we all understand what the goal here is. If we can maybe help him refine a little bit, it'll have more success if we're able to give him concrete pointers. I'm not sure what they are.
So staff suggests that we just continue the item, and Austin will bring back either an expanded list or other input from Chaz, or we'll have Chaz here at the next meeting. But why don't we just do that? So we need a motion for that.
I move. We table it until we hear, see the revision.
Is there a second? All right, motion by How-
Andrew Howard.
Andrew Howard, and second by Lori Urquihawa, to continue item number one. Do I need to read the whole thing?
For an expanded-
For an expanded list of trees. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You know, the number of trees in Provo has expanded, and I think 90% of them have been planted by man. That's a rough figure, but when I grew up here, there was hardly any trees, especially in North End. Remember that?
Okay, we will now hear item five. Community and Neighborhood Services Department requests various code amendments to titles 14 and 15 to allow for permeable driveways and parking lot surfaces. This would apply citywide, and Mr. Taylor will again present.
Thanks. So with our current city code, when it talks about parking spaces, it says that all parking spaces must be paved with either asphalt or concrete. Those are the only two materials that are allowed. So what this code amendment seeks to do is give more flexibility and allow new types of parking surfaces that give for natural drainage. So when it rains, instead of it being funneled off into pipes, into the Provo River, into Utah Lake, it would naturally infiltrate into the groundwater, into the water table and become groundwater below. So this is the current state, right? All parking spaces have to be either concrete or asphalt. This is in, this is in southeast Provo. What happens if they get flooded is they become wakeboarding parks, right? So this is, this is actually in Orem, it's not Provo, but it's in the Sprouts Parking Lot, right there by the mall, during a flood. And so this is what happens when we over-pave things, that we don't let it naturally go back into the ground, right? So nowadays, there are new pavements that allow us to naturally infiltrate the water, goes right through. And what happens as, as it filters through gravel or dirt, it becomes cleaner water, and it stays in our water table versus the image on the right is what's currently happening. It hits the asphalt, goes into our pipes, goes down the river as dirty water, and if it backs up, then it just floods what we have. So what we're proposing is allowing a few new types of surfaces. So these are, it says, permeable pavement, pavers, stabilized gravel, grasscrete, or similar material approved by the Development Services Department. We also clarified that the gravel stones have to be 3/4 inch in diameter, and that's so that they don't go into the treads of the tires and then end up on the road. I went out and I personally measured every tire, like every large truck tire that I could find in our City Hall parking lot, and I found no groove that was wider than a half inch. So we determined that 3/4 inch is not going to stick into a tire. The fire department asked that we state that the driveways in the parking lots have to hold at least 75,000 pounds. That's what their fire trucks need to, to be supported with, I guess. And then you all asked that we clarify that all ADA requirements are followed as they should be. And so here, I'll show you some examples of what's done in other places. I'll show you examples in hot places, dry places, rainy places, this city, of surfaces of parking lots, of driveways that are built with permeable surfaces. So this is beautiful Annapolis, Maryland, with brick paver streets. This is beautiful Provo, Utah, with a brick paver driveway, currently illegal. This is Brooklyn, New York. After the Hurricane Sandy hit, they needed, they knew they needed more permeable surfaces because they were getting flooded when the hurricane hit. And so this parking lot was built after that hurricane. It's a stabilized gravel surface. You can see that there's a metal grid rolled out over the parking lot, and then they fill it with gravel. And so that makes it so the gravel doesn't fall out and track onto other surfaces. Here's a beautiful gravel driveway in Minneapolis, Minnesota, place that is colder than Provo, snows more than Provo, and they do just fine with it. Here's St. George, hot and dry, a gravel driveway. Here's a gravel driveway in Provo, which is also legal under our current code. This is moving into the grasscrete territory. This is in Malibu. You've got grass, you've got pavers, and then another type of grasscrete in a cold and snowy place in Canada. So those are all the types of surfaces that this code amendment would allow. It would give more flexibility, and it would allow rainwater to naturally infiltrate into our water table.
Any questions for staff?
I think having more, more choices is a good thing. I will tell you that in places where it's really hot, concrete and asphalt, I've replaced a piece of property with pavers, and it flexes. It's more expensive, but I think the replacement costs over the long run will be less. Hoping.
I'm just curious, what is the cost difference between the permeable pavement and just regular asphalt or regular pavement?
So from what I've researched in the spectrum of cost with parking lots and driveways, so the cheapest is gravel, and then above that, you've got asphalt, then you've got concrete. Usually the permeable versions of asphalt and concrete are a bit more expensive than the typical versions. And then pavers tends to be the most expensive, but also the longest-lasting.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, under this findings of facts, it says, "The water table in Provo has been sinking for decades, as measured by Provo City Public Works." Well, I can testify to that because of my wells in West Provo are going dry in the summertime. So certainly the aquifers are going down and down. You mentioned that you didn't have to water your trees, but I think you better start watering them. Because I don't think they can naturally, their roots are not going deep enough to get to the aquifer anymore. Maybe years passed, the water was close enough to the surface, especially down where I'm at. You could dig a fence post, and it would fill up with water if you left it for an hour. But that's not- But that's not the case anymore. And so it's just interesting information to know about the trees and the water.
Yeah, that was an interesting fact that I learned from Shane Jones in Public Works. I was talking with them about the water table, and they just showed me a graph of the wells that we have and how it's just gradually been sinking over time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we will now turn it over for public comment. Are there any neighborhood chairs that would like to say anything? Seeing none? Is there anybody from the audience that would like to say anything? All right, seeing none, we will close public comment and turn it back over to the commission for comments, questions, motion?
Just a comment. I think that this is a very positive move of allowing more flexibility. And I think this kind of thing actually would provide cooling as well.
Ms. Jensen?
So I just have two concerns that I've expressed to Austin before, but I just want to make sure that the requirements that are established here, so in the wording of 14.08.130, number two, it says that the spaces shall be provided with a dust-free and mud-free access from a public street or road. I just want to make sure that it's clear that that requirement means we don't want people on sidewalks to have to trip through gravel, or kids riding scooters, or I've talked about this before, but I feel like, I feel like you've tried to meet that with the wording that's proposed here, but I want to make sure that we, that that's understood, that the cars can't track gravel onto the sidewalk or surrounding roads because we're allowing new surfaces. I know there's people all over the city who have been yelled at for not having their yard finished, so they threw some gravel down and counted as a driveway, and it's not legal, but it's a huge enforcement thing. So it just goes undone. But if we start saying that gravel driveways are allowed, from what I can see, gravel driveways are still not going to be allowed. It's going to be only if they're within the metal framework, right? We just, I don't want to open a can of worms that says, "Hey, we actually don't care if you put something nice down. We just want a surface to be there." And then we end up ruining all the sidewalks, and all of our pedestrian-friendly efforts are ruined because nobody really can ride their bike or walk or push a stroller because there's gravel everywhere. Anyway, maybe that's extreme, but that's... Then my secondary concern is the snow removal, that most of the surfaces you can remove snow off of, but I just have a hard time seeing a snowplow do a parking lot that's covered in gravel, even if it's restrained gravel. Maybe it's not necessary because it's all just going to disappear. But not within an hour.
Mr. Knudsen?
It says in using gravel, stones must be at least 3/4 inch, which you talked about, in diameter, and secured in place with a pair grid sealant. How often does a sealant have to be applied?
I don't personally know how often it needs to go in, but there are different ways to stabilize gravel. You can do that metal grid that I showed you. There are also chemicals that'll seal it so that it stays in place, basically like an asphalt at that point. It's not as permeable, but it's flexibility. We're allowing, we're allowing a new type of parking lot or driveway, which I think is a positive move.
Yes.
This was brought to my mind by Ms. Jensen, that what is the interaction of these with sidewalks? I mean, if somebody puts in a gravel driveway, they still have to have a sidewalk in front of their house, don't they?
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right.
Madam Chairman, I would move that we, the Planning Commission, forward a positive recommendation to the Provo City Council for item number five, which is various code amendments to title 14 and 15 to allow permeable driveways and parking lot surfaces. Citywide application as presented in this.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Howard, second by Mrs. Jensen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. Now we're going to item two. Provo City Council Office requests various minor amendments to titles 14 and 15 to clarify language related to accessory living spaces, bicycle parking, design standard references, and the impact fee schedule. This would be citywide impact, and Aaron Ardmore is presenting.
Brandon Larson, pitch hitting, or pitch, yes, pitch hitting for Aaron Ardmore. So Aaron's at the planning conference in Moab today, and I'm here, so... So what this is, this is just a collection of cleanup amendments. There have been a few amendments that have occurred in the little, in the recent past, and just wanted to clean up a few things. So number one, the First Amendment deals with accessory, with the term accessory living spaces. You can see that there on the left-hand side, 14A and 1450. 1414A is the LDR, Low Density Residential Zone, and 1459 is the, is a low-density pro zone. So what the idea here is to try to make these two sections or subsections conform with a recent amendment to 1430, which is, which relates to accessory, or yeah, accessory apartments, the accessory apartment overlay. So you can see the change there. Number two, the Second Amendment, it's pretty straightforward. What this is, is in the parking chapter of Title 14, there's two tables, rail bus, terminals, airports. They got kind of tacked on at the end of the education subsection of that table. There's a number of... If you look at the table, you can see on the far-left side, there's land use type, and there's subsections in there, like education, commercial activities, auto-related, transit station. Or rather, let me back up. So rail bus, again, rail bus, terminals, and airports kind of got tacked on to education, and we thought that it'd make more sense to kind of make its own land use type there, make it a little more clear. And so, again, that's in two different sections of chapter, of chapter 1437, the parking chapter. This is, this amendment number three relates to the MDR and HDR zones. This is just kind of a mistake. The design guidelines. We tried to identify the project plan, design review, and design guideline chapters that might be applicable if someone were going through the zone and trying to determine which sections would be applicable as they kind of put together their application. This chapter currently is citing them to the wrong section. And so this is just basically cleaning up that wrong citation. And then finally, impact fee calculations. In chapter, in section 15860, we reference a date that's applicable to the impact fee analysis and impact fee facility plan. That was recently updated. You've got that new date of December 10, 2019. And so those are, those are the amendments. The staff feels they're pretty minor. They appear to be in harmony with the general plan and just, again, are put forward just to kind of clean up the ordinance a bit. And staff would recommend to the Planning Commission that they forward a positive recommendation to the city council on these various amendments.
Thank you.
And not a, just a comment, and I don't think it would affect whatever we do here, but when you have a date like that, things like that, when you have a table of prices that change, if you give that table a specific name and just say, "Refer to the current pricing sheet on all your documents," and you won't have to come back and do this. I've run across this in a different thing, and you're chasing your tail forever.
I agree.
Just label it with whatever the reference sheet is, and then that reference sheet can be updated as often as you want, or as long as it goes through the proper channels.
I think that's a good idea, actually.
Yes, Ms. Jensen?
So I just had a little, maybe a correction. On the front page of the staff report, summary of key issues, the second to the last one says, "Correcting the design standard reference for the MDR and HDR zones," and then it lists two sections, but those are both the same.
I noticed that as well.
Okay, I don't think that matters because that's just text, but just in case it did, I noticed it was correct on the correction. And then the other one I just had, maybe it's just because I'm relatively new to this, but in the wording change for the first item, is that the first item? The living spaces one? It says accessory living spaces in conjunction with single-family detached homes in both of them. Is that changing what's allowed? You can now have accessory apartments in single-family homes? Or is it saying where accessory apartments are allowed in single-family zones? This is just a different term for it?
It's a different term for it.
So it's not actually changing where it's allowed? Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing an important detail.
If you look at the definition of accessory apartments, it actually says accessory apartments or accessory living spaces. So they're interchangeable terms.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we will now open this up for public comment. Are there any neighborhood chairs? Is there anybody from the public that has any, would like to make any comments? Come on up to the podium. State your name, please.
Hello, my name is Caleb Stark. My purpose for being here today is to learn, so eventually I can help make changes in the community. I have a question for you, sir. And forgive me if I ask silly questions, but like I said, I'm here to learn. What exactly is your motivation for, are you proposing? Are you, what is, what are you trying to accomplish here? Because I'm very interested in the first point you made, the accessory dwelling units.
Hi, that's a, some explanation might be in order there. So the, there was a recent amendment to chapter 1430, and in that chapter, they inserted the term accessory, accessory living space. And that chapter deals, the title of it is, the title is supplementary residential and accessory apartment overlay zone. So it deals with accessory apartments in the city. I think, and Bill may correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think the idea here in using the term accessory living spaces was to kind of underscore the point that the accessory living space is not, it's not an extra dwelling. It's just an extra living space that's subordinate to the one-family dwelling.
Okay. The reason that I asked the question is I was looking at the Provo City website today and some other cities in Utah. I know Salt Lake just recently allowed accessory dwelling units to be in the back of homes. They're just separate buildings that you can use for rental properties. Is that the same, is the same thing?
Some of the changes that took place in the amendment Mr. Larson referred to now allow that in Provo.
Okay, so they can be completely detached? They can be used as rental properties or for family or for whomever?
Yes, there are limited situations, like Mrs. Jensen was referring to. This isn't a citywide thing. There are limited situations in the city where you can have an accessory apartment. Now the city council's made it so that accessory apartment doesn't have to be in the dwelling. It can be a detached building in the backyard.
Perfect. That actually was one of the main reasons I came here to learn about. So thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and turn it back to the commission. Yes, Ms. Jensen?
I'm ready to make a motion. Do we need to discuss this? Thank you for all the cleanup work. I move that we approve item number two as written. Do I need to give you more detail than that? Okay.
Do we have a second? Robert Knudsen? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, did we want to, I'm sorry. Did we want to include in the motion the suggestion that you made?
Yeah, they can do that later. That doesn't have to do with this one.
Okay.
But it's just something for them to get ahead of.
All right, thank you. All right, were there any opposed? All right, thank you. All right. Okay, moving on. Item number three. The Public Works Department requests a general plan amendment for adoption of the 2020 Transportation Master Plan. This would be citywide application, and Robert Mills is here to explain it to us.
Thank you very much. So I actually don't have any slides for you, but we have the entire Transportation Master Plan available if you have any specific questions on any, on any particular pages or anything. But just to give a little bit of background and history, the Public Works Department has been working with Parametrics, a land planning transportation firm, for quite some time on an update to the Provo City Transportation Master Plan. They've been working with the T-MAC Committee for a long time in order to work through some details, some concerns that were had by the T-MAC Committee. And the T-MAC Committee has actually made a recommendation to the Planning Commission and the city council that's part of this report to go ahead and move this on to the city council for adoption. There, I just wanted to also let the Planning Commission know that there's a little bit of history as far as open houses that have taken place. So there have been two previous open houses as the time of writing this report. There was also an additional one that took place last Thursday evening that was very well-attended. And so we've provided a staff report and a recommendation, but I also wanted to just allow the applicant, Parametrics, to come and present any additional information to you folks and answer any questions. They're much more versed on it than I would be able to do, so.
Thank you. Go ahead and come forward. State your name, please, for the record.
Vern Kiesler with Parametrics. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. We've been working on the Transportation Master Plan update for about two years now. We've held three public open houses, one in April 2018, one in November 2018, and then just recently, last Thursday. We have met with the T-MAC Committee nine times and received a lot of great comment. And because of their good work, this is a better plan today because of that. We have met with the Planning Commission three times in study sessions and have been before the Planning Commission once as an interim adoption of some cross-sections that the city council wanted and was adopted so developers could build to the new cross-sections that this commission also recommended in favor of. So it has been a rather large effort, lots of public outreach, very good participation from the community. We were actually still making changes as recent as Friday after our public meeting. We received some comments about the Active Transportation Master Plan chapter, and we made some modifications by adding 1100 West from 560 South to Lakeview Parkway. And we also added 1150 Southwest from 1600 West all the way out past 2050 West Geneva Road area. So that extension was added just recently. We've added that to the project list as well. We understand that we're not going to be everything to everybody, recognizing that the southwest area has some growth to do, but there's also some moratorium issues associated with that area. And we haven't completely built that out by any means. And we haven't completely built that out by any means yet. But our collector streets are there and a lot of active transportation. This is the first time that I know of that Provo City's transportation master plan has included the active transportation of bike, walking, and ped into the document as a chapter, as opposed to a standalone document. That's the way it's been done in the past. We've had a lot of great public comment and a lot of work with the TMAC committee, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, or at least try to.
Any comments or questions? A million, okay.
Here's number one. We have 999,999 after this. Okay, the first one, in section 5.3.2.6. This is probably just something you guys can clean up, but it mentions the 900 East UVX stations and that they want to work around those when they plan for bikes, bike traffic and bike safety on 900 East, and there aren't any? So I don't think you need that section?
5.3.2.6 on 900 East?
Mm-hmm.
And we're discussing...
It has several sentences in there, just talking about working bicycle traffic around the UVX stations on that road.
But we're hoping someday there will be, so.
Okay, so that is a possible change. Okay, then disregard. I thought maybe that was something that used to be a plan and isn't anymore. Okay. Another one was from the notes we received in our, in our, from the TMAC committee from February 12th meeting. It said at the end of item three that Clancy has concerns that still have not been addressed. So I was just, what were these concerns and were they addressed in the, in the notes later on?
Well, I'll let Mr. Black talk about that. He is here tonight, and we have met him halfway, probably, in reality. We've added 1100 West and Southwest Provo from 560 South to Lakeview Parkway.
Okay, so those are some of those changes you talked about?
Couple of the changes. But it doesn't by any means encompass all his concerns. We're trying to balance everybody's concerns.
And then I had a question on the, where you break it down and say what your proposals are after having had that meeting. It says 800-820 North. It says these improvements west of 500 West warrant further evaluation. Is that something we need to understand before we talk about this plan? Like, what are the current concerns that need to be evaluated further?
Well, as far as 800 North, and I can have Shane Winters, this is one of our city engineers from Public Works, answer that. My understanding, that plan was completed two years ago. We have not changed anything as far as the functional classification of that road along that corridor from Geneva to, I want to say University or Fifth West, something like that. And we had a lot of people come out to the public meeting and want to talk about 820 North and...
Because on the map, it says something's going to happen, but there isn't really a plan?
No, I think something's going to happen someday, but I think that in reality, it's not in Phase One of the plan. So it's not within the first 10 years of the, of the plan. UDOT has to do an interchange study that they're looking at between University Parkway and Center Street in Provo. And where that interchange ends up is largely going to probably change the game a little bit in the size of facility that's going to need to access that road or that interchange.
Is that something that could foreseeable happen before Phase Two projects get addressed?
It's an environmental study, so they just kicked it off probably in December, November. They're going to take two full years to do that, to just come up with a recommendation.
Okay. And then my last question was on the Center Street proposals that you, that the committee presented. Number one, it says that part of their goals is to emphasize that Center Street is a destination, not a thoroughfare. So my question was, what does that mean? Like, how are they going to advertise? Are they going to be a big sign as you enter Center Street? Is it going to just be word of mouth or habit or?
I think that's a question for the TMAC committee. They're the ones that express concern with that.
That's not necessarily related to the transportation.
Okay, if, but I just thought Center Street as a pedestrian thoroughfare was part of that. So if they had a plan for how that was going to be enforced?
That was further discussion by the TMAC committee that was included in your notes of their...
Okay, so all of these questions I have are irrelevant, is what you're saying? Not irrelevant in the long scheme of things?
That one's not pertinent to the transportation master plan.
Okay.
I think they're relevant. I think what some of the concerns is, and we've been discussing with, with TMAC, is Center Street's designated as a pedestrian mall, right? It doesn't currently necessarily act as a pedestrian mall. It serves 23,000-plus cars. It acts as an arterial street. And so TMAC, what some of the things that they had said is, what can we do to help make that more of a pedestrian thoroughfare?
Okay, so by emphasize, it's not like a public advertising campaign, but more of a, we need to think of how we're going to make this happen?
In the future, how, transportation-wise, how we can maybe change that downtown area through different, you know, roadways, whatever that is, of how we can try to help accommodate that.
I guess the reason I just had so many questions was if, if these minutes from the meeting or this report from the meeting says that there's so many things that they, the committee themselves are still unsure of or would like further valuation, does that technically mean that this plan isn't ready for us to address for approval? That was how those two were related.
I think that it mostly means that these are just some things that the TMAC committee just wanted to pass on to the Planning Commission. Not necessarily that they want them to specifically change things about the plan itself, but these are just notes that the TMAC committee wanted to express to the Planning Commission and to the city council after dealing with this plan for such a long time and being so involved in it, that they wanted to just overemphasize these things.
The reason I worry is because I know that there's a lot of misunderstanding with the community that just because there's a plan for what we foresee for the future, that it means it's happening tomorrow. And so if we've got this transportation plan that talks about these things in a committee that already has these concerns, how do we communicate that to the public if we move forward or don't move forward with approval of the plan so that there's an understanding around what it actually means? For example, if the, if the plan, if we recommended it for approval tonight and the city council heard it, what does that mean to these people who have these areas of concern as far as what's imminent and what will, you know, that might happen without them having further input on it?
From, talking about Center Street, for instance, one of the things in the plan takes it from an arterial to a local street, from 500 West to 200 East.
But you'd have to divert traffic somewhere.
So that's a problem. Just because we change the designation on the map doesn't necessarily mean we're going to move traffic patterns, right? And so I think that requires additional study. That's one of those areas that, you know, has been defined as a pedestrian mall for a long time. But when I think of a pedestrian mall, I think of Boulder, Colorado, right? And where there's no traffic going up and down that roadway. But that's a huge policy decision, and that's way above the transportation master plan.
So it's more like a general plan for roads, and we use it as a guiding principle, and we need to help the community to understand that just because the transportation master plan suggests something, it doesn't mean it's a done deal. Is that a correct assumption? Okay.
Thank you.
I'm done. That wasn't a million, but it was close.
I thought that was an excellent summary. We went through a similar thing just about an hour ago on a different topic, so.
So again, just to kind of give a little bit more context, the transportation master plan is a required part of the general plan advisory in nature. This is, this is what we've intended to do, right? But like, all plans can change.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, we'll be remiss if I didn't bring up that there's a lot of roadways in the city that we've had a lot of great public comment on. There are roadways that are, you know, experiencing more traffic. There's traffic calming issues, and this is the first step of moving forward. We've had some healthy discussion on 2230 North in Provo. I bring that up because it's currently been changed from, in our plan, from saying a five-lane arterial widened to a five-lane arterial to capacity and safety improvements. That requires further study as well.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Black, do you want to come up? Thank you.
Clancy Black, Chair of TMAC Transstation Mobility Advisory Committee. I want to make sure our TMAC position is represented well. We're very happy with the plan. As they describe, it's been through tons of work and revision, and we are very happy with how it is currently written and do recommend, do provide a positive recommendation. A few quick comments on some of the questions you asked. First of all, the notes that we provided in your packet in our recommendation, those are primarily given for context to highlight key issues so you could understand our perspective and how we addressed some of those key issues. So I wouldn't want you to think we have lingering concerns as much as just we wanted to make sure you knew why things were done the way they were. Regarding 800 North in Phase Two, yes, it is on the plan because the, the technical evaluation shows that a project is needed there, so we feel it's important to keep that in Phase Two. But yes, there is lots of time if things change with the potential interchange or other projects to make sure we get the right, the right solution there. So keeping it in Phase Two makes, makes a lot of sense, and we're, we're very comfortable with that. Center Street, as Robert kind of mentioned, that Center Street motion is and was very much a separate issue from the transportation master plan in our meeting. I realize in your notes and the way we presented it, it looks like it's the same thing, and we're learning, so I apologize for that. So it is, it is related, but very much a different policy level type of issue where we wanted to encourage the council to consider some things. The, the specific comment that was mentioned in the notes that was a, maybe a lingering concern is related to active transportation infrastructure in Southwest Provo. Whether that growth happens a year from now or five years from now, it's critical that we identify the right corridors for active transportation as soon as possible so that whenever that development happens, the city is prepared and the plans accurately represent what the city wants out there. So my recommendation, I actually printed a copy. I could give it to you for the notes, if that's okay. It would be that 600 South be designated as a citywide corridor instead of a neighborhood corridor. Sorry, if you have the plan open, it's on page 85 is the, the map I'm looking at. So the, oh, perfect. Thank you. Maybe it's not page... So it's figure 5.4, so probably keep scrolling down a little. Yeah, this is the one. So, yeah, if you can scroll, there we go. So the intent of my comment is that in Southwest Provo, basically the quadrant between I-15, Center Street, and Lakeview Parkway, I feel it's important that we designate more active transportation corridors there so that they can be built when the development comes. My recommendation would be that 600 South be designated as a citywide corridor or blue instead of the green line that you see there right through the middle. It'd be a blue. And that simply allows for greater amenities to potentially be installed there.
Do you want to use the pointer?
Uh, yeah. I mean, I, can I hand, can I just hand these several? I printed several copies to, to simplify this. Thank you. Oh, here we go. See if I can keep my hands steady. Yeah, so 600 South would recommend that be a citywide corridor. If you look at the, the grid of active transportation corridors in most of the city, it's fairly dense, and that's the way you want it for active transportation. But looking out here, it's pretty sparse. I mean, and it resembles this area, which is pretty industrial, more than it resembles any of these areas. So knowing that's going to be primarily residential, that's kind of the basis of our comment. So I'd recommend 600 South be citywide instead of neighborhood. Number two on my comments, 2500 West corridor be designated as a neighborhood corridor or a green corridor. Green is in the color. Number three, 2050 West slash Geneva Road. Recommend that this portion also be blue instead of green, designated as citywide. 1600 West, recommend that this be continued north as a neighborhood or green corridor. Number five, 1100 West. I think Vern said the change was already made, but that this be designated as a neighborhood or the green color corridor. That was the last comment. We discussed it briefly in our meeting, but due to time constraints, felt it was important to get our recommendation out the door without this and that I could make this comment separately in this meeting. So that addresses what I wanted to share tonight. I'm happy to answer any other questions if it's appropriate, and I'll stick around if, if they come up. Okay, thank you.
I had one question. I'm not sure who... Oh, I'm sorry. I'll ask it... I'll ask it at the end. Is there anybody else from Parametrics or from your group that needs to speak? Okay. Is there neighborhood chair?
Becky Bogdan, Lakewood Neighborhood Chair, so I'm Southwest Provo. My suggestions were the 1100 West. But I would also like to see, I agree with this 600 West being blue. I wondered why that wasn't blue in the first place? Six South, I'm sorry, Six South. I'm West all the time, right? There's going to be an awesome sports park out there. I would love to see that one that curves down from 920. Bill, can you help me out here? The one that curves down from 920 over to 1150? That blue line that comes down 1600? Yeah, there we go. I would like to see that extend. And now they said that they extended some of that because that was part of my comments, but all the way to the sports park. And then that 600 South, have it come down to the sports park. That way, there's access to that sports park because the sports park will have neighborhood amenities. And so that would be a great access point for bicycle and pedestrian traffic to hit that park, or to hit that park right there with all of those awesome amenities. And I do agree that when the west side develops, I would love to see these things in place so that the developer builds them for us and we don't have to be stuck without transport, public pedestrian transportation out there. I, I would like to thank Parametrics for spending Friday because I am pretty sure it was my comments that made them work late. And so like I said, I haven't seen where they put those two, but I, I would really love those to extend out to that sports park from the north down and then from that one over. That way, everybody's not stuck going from the south up. And then just a few comments from the Sunset Neighborhood Chair. Six South is in their neighborhood. And so, Bill, if you could help me out again with that six... This is the pedestrian map, but we're talking about car transportation. He would like to see an east-west corridor to go from Six South there and then where it goes up at 900 West, take Fifth, Fifth South all the way out to State Street. So that would be an east-west corridor.
Becky, I think you have a pointer.
Do I have a pointer? Now can I use it? We'll see. Okay, so here's Six South and then go up here. So it's over the railroad tracks right there. And then just extend it all the way out to State Street. So that would be all, all a collector road right there. So then we have east-west from the west side all the way to the east side. Well, that road, Fifth South, already goes through. You can see it right there. And then... Can you, can you pull up the... Oh, he's, he's getting at it. He's getting at the transportation ones. 1600 West, from this point to this point, is very, very narrow, and it is an alleyway. And where the farmers live mostly here, and we have this new development that'll come online soon with an access point up here and then over here on 1600. There's not even a sidewalk. You can barely get two cars side by side down that section of road. To have that put on some kind of, it's already, it's already a collector road, so at some point, it will be widened. point it will be widened, but we're getting proposals for right here because that's close to where the sewer trunk line is. And so then you're going to be getting all of that traffic going north with no connection currently to the parkway. And so his suggestion was to put that under some kind of a CIP plan to get that widened. Is that it right there? Okay, so where am I at? That's fifth, that's eleventh, that's sixteenth, so right, that section right there. See, eventually it will go through, it just doesn't go through. And so development, if we get some development there, this one will come online eventually. It's, it's slated to go through, they're just waiting on, it's stopped for some reason. Um, that will bring a lot more traffic to this right here. And you've got the elementary school right here and this is, they have one bus route for just right over here, everybody else walks. So this will be a walking for those kids to go back and forth to school. This right here is that proposed junior high. It's probably right there. That proposed Dixon move right there. That's one of the reasons why I wanted eleven hundred as a pedestrian, that way whatever the district does with it, we're already set. Um, his other suggestion was this one right here, it cuts through a bunch of fourplexes right there. He would much rather see it go to the train tracks than to take out all that affordable housing right there. So that is, that's all, any questions for me? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Evans with the Pleasant View Neighborhood. The neighborhood has been actively involved in planning for the, what is always a constantly changing development within Provo City. And twenty-two thirty north or twenty-two hundred north, yeah, goes through one portion of the neighborhood that has, uh, single family, one-family homes in it as well as another area where we have some medium density apartment condo complexes in the neighborhood. Uh, we had a neighborhood meeting last night, we had, uh, over eighty people that showed up and, uh, and one of the purposes was to update on the plan for twenty-two hundred north, uh, twenty-two thirty north. And, uh, it's been eight years of discussions with, at Mountain Lands Association of Governments, with Provo City Public Works, with consultants, and, uh, I'll just say that the neighborhood is supportive of the idea that twenty-two hundred north or twenty-two thirty north will undergo further study with regards to safety and capacity and that there is no absolute plan in place. We're earnestly opposed to the road being converted to a five-lane, uh, uh, road. So anything along that direction will have, uh, very definitive, uh, uh, opposition. But the, uh, so in that regard, the plan for a five-lane development needs to be removed for the Mountain Land Association of Government Transportation Improvement Plan, that's the tip, it needs to be removed from the Transplan fifty regional transportation plan. They're both listed as five-lane, you know, developments there. Uh, there's also a budget of three point two million that's listed for the project and that budget is based on a five-lane road. So, uh, the budget certainly needs to be changed so that it really reflects what, what we're planning on doing, even to say to be determined would be, uh, a really good, uh, indication of where we are in the planning process. So with regards to capacity and safety, let me think about capacity first. In the, uh, uh, twenty-twenty transportation master plan that is before you, if you look at the twenty-fourty projection, uh, that if you do no change at all on twenty-two hundred north, um, the capacity, uh, is, uh, doesn't change in terms of what we have right now. In fact, if you look back at that year two thousand for the, you know, two decades ago on transportation master plans, the average daily count on twenty-two hundred north was over twenty thousand cars a day. We're now at seventeen thousand, so we've actually decreased fifteen percent in twenty years. So, um, so it's, uh, but there are some maybe future changes that will impact this issue of capacity on the road. First of all, the Church of Jesus Christ is building a temple on Geneva Road in Orem, uh, near the intersection with the University Parkway. And there is some thought that traffic will decrease on twenty-two thirty north as patrons use the Orem location rather than the Provo City location as they come through there. That, that's, again, that's a possibility. Construction's supposed to start this year, uh, they're pushing for a two-year construction timeframe, so we'll know sometime in the future. Secondly, BYU has announced that they will be increasing by five hundred students each year over the next six years, the number of students who are enrolled. So that's an extra three thousand students, that's a ten percent increase in the number of students at, uh, at BYU. And, uh, we really look forward to the idea that additional student housing capacity will be realized at the south end of campus where the high-density student housing is, uh, has been planned to go into for long-term, but still the traffic, uh, issues will be real from that change in the density in this area of Provo. Thirdly, BYU has announced a hundred and seventy thousand square foot music building that will be constructed on the corner of Ninth East and, uh, eleven hundred north. That's basically the east side of the law, library parking lot and south of the Ninth East or the creamery on Ninth East. It'll have a thousand-seat auditorium in there. And the result will be that the current parking that's on the east side of the campus there will be reduced by over half, so it'll go from about six hundred parking spots down to about two fifty. And, um, the traffic routing will be different for performances there as compared to the current Harris Fine Art Center where patrons can enter into the large parking lot from the west side of campus using Coog, Cougar Boulevard and entering into the campus into the parking lot, Museum of Art. With this performance center on the east side of campus, the only way that patrons can get there is from the north or south side of campus, University Parkway, twenty-two hundred north, eight hundred north, and then all being funneled onto Ninth East. And so we've got some major traffic issues and parking issues that are going to impact surrounding residential areas as a result of that. And so, you know, maybe this is the right time to look at a UVX stop at the BYU Wilkinson Center, turn in, into the roundabout, drop off there, or, you know, go back to what was visited before of UVX stop on Ninth East. And to, I mean, really consider how to manage the, uh, number of people who will be accessing BYU in the central part. And, uh, like any sort of master plan, it's going to take big effort and it's going to involve municipal, city, state, federal, private entities in order to work these issues out. But I just point out that that project plan for the music building will be coming to you, the Planning Commission, sometime in the future for approval. So, uh, I would hope that we have these issues of parking and traffic flow and how they're going to impact the surrounding areas worked out prior to it having, before it comes to you. So we're looking forward to being involved in that discussion. So with regards to the safety, um, there is a traffic warrant study that's been looked at for the intersection of twenty-two hundred north and twenty-three hundred north, which is right here. Twenty-three hundred north is just to the north here, it has both the, uh, Rock Canyon Elementary School and the Centennial Middle School on there. We've worked with the city, we've been able to get parking off of that street, so we have bike lanes, it's clear traffic, how to get across, but we still have the long-term issue of pedestrians, in particular schoolchildren, crossing twenty-two hundred north to get to school and, and to return and also all the activities that occur in the fields there. And so one possible solution to that is to put a traffic light at that intersection. And, uh, I know that Provo City has purchased a home there at that corner and there's, there's lots of, lots of people out drawing lines where gas lines are and stuff like that going on right now. So, uh, we're very interested in, in looking at the safety issues, but before we spend money on a particular project like a traffic light, making certain how that fits into the long-term safety and capacity plan, um, that is needed for the street. Because once we put in a traffic light, kind of constrains the opportunities for the future as to what may or may not happen at that location, just because you don't want to spend money and turn around and do something different in another five years. So, um, so we look forward to being able to look at that design of how safety's best going to be met, particularly for pedestrians along there. But there's also issues of on-street parking, um, a, along twenty-two hundred north, particularly, um, uh, of interest is this stretch between Canyon Road and the intersection. When cars are parked along there, it makes it difficult to perceive what's going on as you come around the corner. There's also, uh, um, a semi-dramatic change in elevation along twenty-two hundred there and at those inflection points, again, having the cars not parked on the side so that, so that people coming in and out of the driveway can easily get in and out. And that'll always be the issue to resolve and then that is, as a city, we don't build arterial roads where there's driveways. And yet all along there, there's a driveway every hundred, hundred and fifty feet. So, uh, we need to really, uh, address the safety issues that way. So we're willing to, uh, uh, and willing and ready to work for strong neighborhood, strong Provo City, and, uh, we thank the Public Works and Parametrics for developing this, uh, transportation master plan that will overall take us either by walking or biking or scooters or cars or autonomous vehicles or public transportation in the future. And we look forward to working together to make that happen. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, could you actually send me an electronic copy of this so I can make sure that the city council gets it?
Can I send it electronic that is, uh, like, some, somehow protected by pass, no, anyway? Do you want that in English or a different language?
Preferably.
Prefer English, okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Sharon Memmott and I had a couple of questions about the transportation master plan. I went to the most recent open house and another one. Comments that I forgot to give Shane were, as we encourage people to ride the UVX, um, I saw no park and ride lots on, on the transportation master plan anywhere. And there's a strong towns thing coming up next week and the comment was made, ride the UVX. Well, the first park and ride lot that I would reach for my northeast neighborhood is downtown next, across the street from the UVX. So we, I think we're missing the point if we want people on mass transit, we have to give them some way to get to it. Because it's two miles for me from the closest station to my home. And I don't know about you, but I'm not walking two miles in the snow to get there. My other comment would be that Center Street was referred to as a pedestrian mall. Somebody mentioned to me that it's already has that definition and I love it. If that's what a pedestrian mall looks like, that's great. Because again, as a non-walker biker, that works, there's some parking, it's fifteen miles an hour, so it's slow enough. And, and I feel like if that were my thoroughfare, I would take first north or some other, third south and get around it because I've tried during, uh, rush hour and it's not happening. So I think we'll work ourselves around it, if that makes sense. Mr. Evans mentioned twenty-two thirty in the comments that I heard at the open house on twenty-two thirty were, as, again, as you mentioned, Ms. Jensen, we see this plan and, and we get very concerned that this is what's in the plan. And, and comments that were made at the open house were, if I'm not supposed to get upset yet, help us understand where we fit in the process. Does that make sense? It's, it's in the plan and it's just a big general plan, I do understand that now, but before they're breaking ground, and now it's too late, a lot of the neighbors have expressed that concern, that that's when we, we, we missed the process. We, we make our comments at the open house and we're told, well, it's, it's too early, we don't want that specific of a plan yet. But when you're breaking ground, we know it's too late to, to make those changes. So we, help us understand that. And kind of along those lines, I've recently had neighbors in my neighborhood, Canyon Road just north of there is our concern. I've had people come to me and ask, how do we get a Hawk Light? How do we increase safety for this neighborhood? And I know it's on the phase two to improve Canyon Road, but again, we've got no specifics and so we don't know what that means, but we'd love to be a part of the input. And as I mentioned, my neighbors are asking for a Hawk Light immediately in front of the fire station as it's being built. I know the firehouse has a plan for a flashing fire truck. I mentioned to Jordan at the city that, um, and, and we are in those discussions, but I don't know what the process is. And he's talking about doing counts, but again, how do we get in there before we spend this money as was mentioned and then have to change it immediately if we decide that? I know the fire station's talking about a flashing fire truck for as they're, as they pull out of the fire station, we're suggesting that that change to a flashing prepare to stop and where he's, because it's suggested further north on the road from the firehouse, along the part of the S curve and then immediately in front of the fire station, because it has become a thoroughfare for the children and many, um, joggers, walkers, pedestrians, that it could also become a Hawk Light that, so, so this light says prepare to stop and where we're actually crossing actually turns red. So as you come around that corner, you're warned, you better be slowing down. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs? Okay. Are there any other neighborhood chairs that would like to make a comment? Okay, anybody from the public?
Hi, my name's Kate Felt, I'm, I'm also from Pleasant View and I just wanted to come and talk about the twenty-two hundred and how, like, are, I feel like that neighborhood, all of my neighbors are very concerned that, about the five-lane idea. And, and it was so relieving yesterday to hear that it's been, it's not going to happen as a five-lane, um, but it need, like, it's very concerning, the idea of that being turned into a bigger road. Anytime you make a bit, a road bigger, people are just going to go faster and there are kids trying to get to school and, I mean, it's just going to make it significantly less safe. As far as like practicality, like I live there, um, I, I have to pull onto the street during the busiest part of the day, every single day, um, right on the, um, like, right at that, like, where the hill comes down. And it's never like, actually, it's not bad, right? Like practically speaking, me living there every single day during the busiest part of the day, I still don't have to wait that long, um, to make a left-handed turn going up the street. The only time I turn right is when it's snowing, but there's like a lot of snow, because it's just dangerous to go up the, the snowy road. Um, but like, it practically speaking, in my opinion, best case scenario, you don't do anything to it, right? Like, don't, don't, don't increase, um, or invite more road cars to come on that road. Take them, take them down University Parkway, take them other places because there's no more growth going to happen in that neighborhood. Like, it's, it's all going to be at BYU south of, of where we are and all of the neighbors, I think, are like extremely concerned about the idea. There's, I mean, that neighborhood just south of twenty-two hundred, all of those kids have to cross twenty-two hundred to get to Rock Canyon Elementary School and making it bigger, making it like, hold more capacity just seems like practically really, like, a very dangerous, um, and, and really like terrible idea, to be really honest. That's just kind of, that's the sense that everybody who lives- everybody who lives there feels. And I just wanted to come and represent that. So.
Thank you.
What?
Did you have a question for her?
Just gonna ask her what, what her feeling was as far as the light there.
Oh, you know, I'm like, not, I am not any type of expert. I, I think it would be nice to have, I mean, the reality is, like, it's not that much further to the light, further south and/or further, well, yeah, most of, yeah. But that's where the kids who are younger specifically watch, walk across. But I've definitely watched teenagers like do the little, and like run across, but totally jaywalking. But for the most part, like, there's safe ways for them to be able to get across with the lights that are currently there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to comment on this item?
Rich Ziegler. I also live in the Pleasant View neighborhood, and I actually live really close to University Parkway. And 2230 North, I know, has kind of been a hot button for us. And, and I think the mantra that can happen is if, if we make it five lanes, if you build it, they will come. And, you know, traffic is going to follow the path of least resistance. It reminds me of, I, I grew up in the, in, in the Chicago area. And there was a road that you would think would be an arterial road. And it narrowed down to one lane in each direction, 25 miles an hour, and then opened up. And, and I'm not a traffic expert, but a limited reading I've done, you know, they talk about traffic diets, where roads are too big, and they scale them down to, to constrict the traffic. And certainly, we hope to not be in that situation in the future. We need a diet. We're already on a good diet, as far as that, that's concerned. I mean, it's, you know, traffic's going to go where the path of least resistance is. And that definitely is a neighborhood with many driveways that empty right on the road. And that character should stay there. I mean, I, I think it's phenomenal that the traffic has actually gone down in the last 20 years. And hopefully, we'll see that, that, that trend continue citywide. It's probably hard to say citywide, but as more and more people use public transportation. Whenever I go to the airport, I try to take public transportation. Why pay to park, fight the traffic, et cetera, et cetera. So, anyway, that's, that's, that's my concern. And I, I think that, you know, and being right along University Parkway, I literally look right out my window and see the traffic. I mean, it flows along there pretty good. And, and it's good to see those UVX buses filled with people. I mean, sometimes the really early and really late ones aren't that full. But, but the fact that a bus comes by every six minutes during rush hour, I mean, that's just phenomenal. You get on the bus, and you can get to wherever you need to go. And I think that's, that's a, a really neat improvement to our, to our town. I mean, public transportation's got to be a big part of what we're, what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public? Seeing none, public section portion is closed. Bring it back to the commission. Does anybody have any comments, questions?
Did you folks want to address any of the particular issues that were brought up by the public?
Just on the Southwest Provo with the active transportation, I think that we're willing to make those changes. So if the planning commission is so inclined, they can make that as a recommendation in their motion. So as we visited with Public Works just now, Shane, these things, changing the, from citywide, I can list these, I wrote them down, I'm not sure you want them, but 600 South from, to citywide, from 1100 West to Lakeview Parkway, 2500 North to be a neighborhood, 2350 West to be a citywide, 1600 West to be neighborhood, 1100 West to be neighborhood, and then 1150 South to the sports park, extending that as a citywide facility. So I have those written down. We're happy to make those changes and, and place that in the map and on the project lists. I think that the one comment about extending, from the neighborhood chair who wasn't here, but talked about extending a, a facility to look at a collector's street, that would require extensive modeling. We're not prepared to agree to that at this, at this time. Again, plans are updated every five years, and we can take a look at that, or it could be a specialized study, like 2200 North is needed.
And do you know what the, before digging starts, how the public is notified of these issues?
Well, in this particular case, if, if no study was being done, there'd be a, a design that would be presented to the neighborhood. In this particular case, I think everybody's in agreement that a, a well, a well-defined corridor study should be accomplished. And then you agree upon context-sensitive design solutions that meets the needs of safety with the school, the two schools there, meets the safety of the residents of the neighborhood, not only living there, but pulling in and out of their driveways. And so we really look at design. That's where the details are, are needed to be drawn out, is through the design process.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Just a comment. This is, I don't think this is working tonight, but.
I don't, I don't think it is either.
Yeah, I don't hear you.
Anyway, this is a really impressive document. I've spent several hours on it, and I'm still processing. So I'm, I'm feeling like it would be helpful to see some of the modeling results as to where the growth is happening and how this is addressing all of that in a work meeting. And so my preference would be to continue this and then get a bit more information where we can talk about it more, and then bring it back and, and act on that motion at a future date.
I don't know that I have any for others one way or the other. I just know that a lot of work has gone into it up to this point. And at some point, we gotta make a decision. It's been in the works for quite a while.
Yes, Ms. Jensen?
I was just wondering if it truly is a general document, a guiding document, if we need to do as much review as we think we do. Like, I've, I spent several hours going through it and feel like the guiding principles of it all are in alignment with what I, what I feel. And I just want to clarify with that. Mr. Kiesler, if I understand correctly from your comments, that the 2230 North concerns of neighbors were addressed by removing the five-lane corridor and making it an area for improved safety instead. Is that correct?
The wording is safety and capacity improvements. I know Paul Evans mentioned that it needs to be removed from the Mountain Land Plan.
Who has the ability to do that?
When the next plan is updated, I'm sure that should be changed to, to reflect the change in our.
So if we were to change it, they would automatically defer to ours?
They would need to change it. And we still need the 3.2 million. I mean, we're still going to need that money to implement any capacity and safety, safety improvements for that project.
So yes, so Mountain Land Association of Government, they, they pull from our plans, saw the city plans, master transportation.
They're not coming up with these ideas on their own.
No, no, no. They, this, the Mountain Land, who, who looks regionally through, you know, through the county, tries to combine all the city plans. And so as city plans are continually updated, the mountain plan is updated with those changes. So if, like 2200, 2200 North, that language, again, would be updated in the Mountain Land plan as well.
Thank you. So that having been clarified, I just feel like the things that were the hot items that people were very concerned about at the open house last, was that last week already?
Yeah.
That, that those have already been addressed by changes that they've responded to, and that nothing is, no project is set in stone that somebody doesn't already, that it doesn't feel, it doesn't feel like this consensus is in opposition to any of the proposals. So maybe that's naive of me, but that's where I'm inclined to go.
Well, I think, I think you're right. I, I think we've had several presentations on this to date. And if I sat through, and I'm not qualified to understand a traffic plan. I mean, I'm hoping that the people that are doing that do just that. And so that's, that's kind of where I'm at right now. I, I would be in favor of moving this to the, to the council, let them chew on it, and they'll have their input on it as well.
I have one follow-up question. Mrs. Millet raised this question. She said that park-and-ride lots are missing from the plan.
Yes, we have the intermodal terminal, or the intermodal center located in Provo. That was planned many, many years in advance. It just didn't happen overnight. It was on a plan since probably, I want to say 96, 98, as we started to take a look at the Olympic planning. And then it was, you know, recently come to fruition. It's a great asset. But that's Utah Transit Authority asset. And I think the idea is not necessarily to do park-and-ride lots, but to improve the first mile, last mile, active transportation to the UVX stations and to those trails and bike lanes. And I think that's what we're probably more inclined to, to see. I don't think UTA will probably be able, build into any park-and-ride lots to access UVX, because the, the density connects between the two stations at Orem and Provo. So I, your cost of land here has risen immensely. I, I just think that our money would be better spent improving access to those stations through bike ped, rather than building a park-and-ride lot for an automobile.
I would also just add that if you consider where those stations are, you know, the mall, the UTA intermodal hub, the universities, those already have large capacities of parking areas. And so the intention is to, you know, serve those areas so they can get them to other parts of the city and community, rather than necessarily like a traditional park-and-ride. So you could drive your car to like the intermodal hub and then get on UVX and be connected that way. So, just a consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments, or do we have a motion?
All right, I'll give it a go. Madam Chairman, I would move that we recommend a positive recommendation for the plan as presented in Item Three, and with the amendment presented in the handout that we received, as discussed at the podium, for a general plan amendment for the adoption of the 2020 Transport, Transportation Master Plan as presented.
I just wanted to clarify that that included an additional one than what was on the map that was given to us when Mr. Kiesler read off a sixth one, which was 1150 South to extend the, a road to the sports park facility. So just to make sure that was included.
Is there a second? All right, Mr. Knudsen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mrs. Urriagua.
I worry about it. We're all alike.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your comments and participation. Okay, our last item, item number four. The Provo City Community and Neighborhood Services Department requests an ordinance text amendment to the professional office zone, Section 14.16.020, to allow private educational services as a, as a conditional use, citywide application. And Mr. Mills, we have the pleasure of your company again.
Great. And I will go through this as quickly as possible. So recently, there was a request that was related to a, an office building up on Quail Valley Drive. That, that request did not go through the city council, but one thing that came to light during that process was that there is a private school that is currently leasing that property. Most of you know that public schools are permitted in any zoning district. They have some state immunity from certain zoning requirements of municipalities and things like that. But as a private educational facility, those are, those facilities are subject to just the standard zoning requirements that we have. And in a, in a professional office zone, educational facilities aren't a permitted use. If, if the state wanted to come in and put a school there, they could do that, no problem, because they don't have to adhere to our strict requirements. But a private educational facility would need to adhere to our zoning code. And so currently, we have a, a school that's operating very well in that area. However, we need to create enabling legislation to enable them to do that. And so that's what this proposal is. We're proposing that educational facilities, private ones, would be permitted as conditional uses in the PO zone. And up in front of you right now, these are the lists of current permitted uses. And then this slide shows a list of conditional uses. And you'll notice on the second page, we've listed 6,800 educational services. And then in parentheses, we said, "Subject to the provisions of Section 1434.520" of the Provo City Code." This is a new section that we're creating that just lists those specific conditions that we're going to say a conditional use needs to provide. We've had many discussions about permitted and conditional uses, and sometimes they can be problematic. Conditional uses are just fine, as long as they have some specific conditions that we're going to enumerate in the code. So that's what this page entails. So these are the educational services as conditional uses, and the conditions that we have suggested to use the planning commission, and ultimately the, the city council. Parking requirements shall follow the provisions enumerated within the parking code already. And then it would be incumbent upon the applicant to provide a detailed parkings and circulation plan, prepared by some sort of professional, whether an engineer, planner, something like that, that empirically concludes that the existing or proposed facility will not negatively affect area traffic, surrounding land uses, or properties. And the parking and circulation plan would include a drop-off and pickup zone sufficient for the student population, and sufficient queuing space on the property to prevent backups on city streets during drop-off and pickup times. And then such use could, all other public health and safety codes, and then exterior lighting would be required to just be on the property. We, we've had a chance to kind of go through this a little bit. We feel that this would help in this situation. For instance, not just that particular private school, but if, like a Stephen Henneger, Stevens Henneger College wanted to rent out office space, then they would have to go through this process and adhere to those, to these specific conditions. And we currently don't have a way to allow them to do that if they wanted to come in to a professional office zone. So this is a citywide application. For those reasons, we felt that these conditions would mitigate any impacts to surrounding properties. And we would recommend that you forward a positive recommendation. So, and I'm available for any questions.
So, do you have any questions?
I have a question, a couple of questions.
Okay, Mr. Knudsen?
Where it talks about the school has been operational, doesn't seem to have any major impact. Would that, if the school became large enough that it had to have busing, would that be a problem? Talking about drop-off zones, would the number of students be allowed to only rise to a certain level?
Talking about drop-off zones, would the number of students be allowed to only rise to a certain level?
Correct. And so this, as a conditional use permit, as a conditional use, it allows us the ability to examine those things on a capacity basis. It still has to meet the, the requirements as far as the number of parking stalls, the area of drop-off and, and things like that. So, i- it's not saying that it can't expand. It just has to do in a, it has to do so in a systematic way that wouldn't impact the surrounding uses.
Another question on page nine, where you, the allowed uses of that area. So you would have a school next to a behavioral drug or alcohol treatment place? Or next to a sanitarium, convalescent rest home services?
Again, those are, those are uses that are already permitted.
I know, but would you want a school next to them?
I think that as long as those, as long as those possible impacts were mitigated, that could be a use. Because even right now, the state could go in and put a school there. And then there are, there are certain requirements as far as distances and things like that, that are part of state code that they would have to apply to as well.
And doesn't this body look at conditional use permits? Or do we?
In some cases, yes, or it's, or it's administrative hearing type thing.
Did you have a question, Mr. Johnson?
Well, I feel like Mr. Knudsen's concerns would all be, all be addressed by the state code, because those uses aren't compatible by state code, not by city code, right? So there's another filter for that. In the analysis underneath the findings of fact on page three, it just says that no adverse impacts are anticipated. And my big question was traffic. I know that it's all subject to approval, but that's, even with public schools that aren't subject to these rules, we see a lot of backup traffic onto the roads and lots of queuing for, for cars. So how do we, how can we with certainty say that traffic isn't a problem? Just simply because this particular use, it's not a problem and then it will be assessed for each condition? Okay.
I mean, that's why we specifically drafted those conditions to make sure that there's adequate parking and adequate space for drop-off, pickup, and to make sure that that's empirically shown that
Okay.
what they're proposing is going to be okay.
Is there language in the code that you refer them to on these conditional use requirements that would make it so they had to come back to you for approval before accepting more students? Like, like what Mr. Knudsen was saying, if they're, if they start off with twenty students and, and it's on such a rotating basis that they can actually house eighty, but that has an overlap in parking, like, I don't, I'm just, I don't know what the possibilities are. But is there a possibility that they could grow without having to come back and ask for permission to build another structure? In which case, they actually would have a greater impact than what they were originally approved to have?
Customarily, we would receive those complaints well in advance of that.
And if it was a complaint, you would just say this is no longer, the conditions are no longer being met?
They're no longer meeting the, the conditions that they were approved.
All right, I just want to make sure that there wasn't a, we approve it for one and it grows and we have no way to pull it back in?
I think, I think the other thing to consider as well is when we're talking about private institutions, these are, you know, they have customers that they want to make sure that they're providing the service that people would pay for.
More likely to be, to be good at that, okay.
So they would want to make sure that their level of service would likely be higher and therefore adding a value that maybe they couldn't, maybe a different institution couldn't provide. And so my guess is, and I've lived in places where private schools are very, very popular, very, very sought after, and, and they do, you know, kind of tend to cater to that clientele, that they're providing an extra service. And so those are the types of things that they're often cognizant of.
I have, I had two. Now I have three questions. Mr. Knudsen made me think of a third. On use classification, on page nine, bottom third of the page, eight, eight thousand two hundred and twenty-one veterinarian services, D, it says, "Animal noise shall not be audible at the nearest property line." Made me think about children. Children are not quite-
When you put a muzzle on them.
No comment.
You're being too noisy. Go in your kennel. So, how, how is that mitigated?
So Provo City has a noise ordinance?
Yes, they do have a noise ordinance, which brings me to, on page seven, number five, permitted accessory uses. Would playgrounds be a permitted structure?
Yeah, so those would be accessory to the school use.
Okay, would that be allowed to be built outside? Okay. Would it have to be built in the back?
It would have to be built, I mean, not in like a front yard or something like that, so. But it could be to the side or in the back or, as long as it's not in the required yard.
Okay. My third question is this. Back to the behavior drug and alcohol treatment centers, and, and I have no problem with them.
Not yet.
Nope, I have no problem. So if they're already existing, and a school comes in, so the drug and treatment center is there first. A school comes in. A lot of times, you will have, not a lot, I shouldn't say a lot, scratch that. But occasionally, you will have someone who is a sex offender, who might, is restricted from having contact, has to be within a certain distance of children. So a school comes in. What, what would happen in that situation? You may, you may not know that when you issue the, issue the conditional use.
You're right. We might not know that. As far as state licensing requirements, though, I think they would have to go through that process.
I'm sorry, say that again?
With state licensing, I think that they would have to disclose all of that information, do that research. And, and we would definitely be relying on that.
So in order to get a license to run the school, to be a legitimate education institution, they have to go through the state? And the state would screen that out as far as a proximity problem with, with a use that wasn't compatible?
Okay. All right. Those are my questions.
Anything else for me?
Anybody else? Oh, yes.
I'm going to phrase this in the form of a question. I'm assuming that on page ten, two B, when you were talking about queuing spaces, you were really talking about the Q U E, U E version of queuing?
Yes, I'm not, this is not a cue ball.
Anything else from the commission? All right. Seeing nothing, is there a, excuse me, a neighborhood chair that would like to address this issue?
Good evening. Marion Monahan, Edgemont neighborhood chair. I'm in a most interesting position here. This piece of property lies on the very east-north part of my neighborhood. It does not actually affect any of my neighbors. But it does affect all of the ones in North Tempehue, Indian Hills, and Sherwood Hills. So we're just kind of an interesting piece of property right there. The northeast neighborhood chair, it had to work tonight, so she could not attend. Also, the neighborhood's usually very vocal. And they're right here, and so when I didn't see them, I went out in the hall, put in a phone call, and discovered that they thought the city council was going to make this decision. And they have prepared a letter, which has gone to the city council. Sorry, I, they said they sent me a copy. I've checked my email, my spam, my trash, my junk, it's not there. So I have not seen the letter in my email at all. So I, I don't know what it involves. This neighborhood would rather not have this change at this time. They feel, there's been some covenants, I don't know if you're aware of that, on that building ever since it was built. They've never been enforced. Now we have a school there, which is not technically allowed under the, the current ruling. That has never been enforced. So the, the neighbors feel like they've been kind of put upon. They do not object to the school. They've learned that they've got the pressures of Tempehue and, and that. But they are concerned that they would like to have a little more input onto these changes. Is there a map of the school, just out of curiosity, up there?
I don't have a map of it.
You don't have one?
Do you know the address?
That's all right. I just decided to do a test run yesterday. So I drove up and counted the parkings places. I told there was thirty-seven. I could only count thirty-three, but then maybe I don't count very well. I don't know. But if I were to take my child up the driveway to either pick up or drop off, you have to go to the back, make a circle, and come back. But when you make that circle, I don't care, I had a small car. If I'd had my big truck, as it was, I took up quite a few, maybe three parking places, making that turn there. Thank you. And so, there, there are definitely problems there in, in, that really have to be looked at. And so the neighbors say, "Don't do a citywide change, because you're, what you're doing is just solving this one little problem up in the Edgemont neighborhood." And they would prefer that it not be solved at this time. They, I don't know why they thought it was just going to be the council. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
So Sharon Memmott, I'm Marion's vice chair, and the other concerns that we were given was, as she mentioned-
State your name again, please.
Sharon Memmott.
Thank you.
In making a citywide zone change to correct a single problem. But I did read page ten, your educational services as a conditional use, what Mr. Mills has submitted, and I appreciate getting that early, so I had time to read it. But I clicked on the link to section fourteen oh two oh four oh. And it's interesting that you, as you discuss whether the school gets larger or not, you discussed in terms of numbers of students. But as I read the code, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, it, it refers to the number of parking spaces as related to the number of classrooms. And so I'm, I'm a little concerned as I read this and as we deal with this situation. As Marion stated, not personally, but as I hear constantly from the neighbors next door, there are about thirty-three parking spaces. I understand there's only forty-five students, which reasonably to me means there could be two, as, as few as two classrooms. There may be as many as ten, which would mean you'd still need thirty parking spaces. But an applicant could come and tell you, forty students, two classrooms, six spaces. But what we actually see on a daily basis is, well, there may be only forty-five students. That equates, in this neighborhood, to a lot of cars, a lot of traffic, that they feel like they deal with constantly. And so we felt like we needed to come and represent that to you. I appreciate how hard this is for the city in listing it as a conditional use, which I wasn't aware of. You really do have to grant unless certain criteria are met. And so I don't know how to equate the two. How do, how do you make that balance? Because as, as I read that and the health and safety, I've heard from my neighbors that they feel like it is a health and safety issue as people that live directly across the street feel like parents would just as soon pull into their cul-de-sac and say, "Go." And they run across the street instead of, instead of having to wait in the queue, I guess. So, those are our concerns with this.
Thank you.
Okay, I just, Becky Bogdan, Provo resident. Okay, so, just while you're thinking about this, my neighborhood had a retirement home. And because of the conditional use permit that was put on that, well, actually, I have two of them, one in each corner of my neighborhood, that were retirement homes, because of the conditional use permit that were put on those, they both turned into drug and alcohol rehabilitation centers. One of them is across the street from the preschool and the proposed Dixon Junior High location. So just as you're, you're thinking about this, those retirement homes have come to burn us before, and the schools. And there's nothing that we can do about it, because, if am I right, bill is tied to the property, not the owner. And so, at any time, because it's the same kind of a thing, we're dealing with disabled persons, correct? It falls under the same thing. So just, I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the commission. Yes, Mrs. Uriagwa.
This is for staff. I'm just wondering, has the city been receiving complaints about this property? Or you honestly didn't know that the school existed until?
So this was, the school was granted a business license because those reviewing the application just saw school, automatically thought it was okay. There hasn't been any complaints regarding the school. I actually, one day, well into their semester, went up to, and I parked right here, in this cul-de-sac, sorry. So I, I started, I, I arrived there at about seven twenty in the morning. And I, their, their school doesn't start until eight. And so I, I looked and, just to see what the parking situation, the drop-off situation was. All of the, all of the vehicles were able to come in, pull in, and then turn around, drop their children off, and exit that way. There were two out of twenty vehicles total that made a left turn to go that way. They are, this school in particular is at an offset schedule from Tempehue. So Tempehue starts just a little bit earlier than the school and gets out a little bit earlier, because I went up there again in the afternoon, just to see how it works. No cars queued onto the street. There was actually sufficient space in the afternoon for all of the cars to pull into the parking lot, make a U-turn, and, and then be headed out of the parking lot. And so all of them were actually on the property, waiting to pick up their kids. I spoke with the, the headmaster of the school several times. He said that it would be very, very easy for them, if an expansion situation ever occurred, to be able to even offset their own classes. So like, maybe the kindergarten or kids get picked up at a different time than the older kids, or something to, to manage that, so.
You know, this, this particular project has been a challenge for as long as I can remember. Couple of questions. If, if we went ahead and approved this, would the applicant have to come back?
For a conditional use permit?
For additional, well, see, I think that gives the public a bite of the apple. And, you know, a school- you know, a school seems pretty compatible with the, the thing. And I understand the traffic concerns, because I don't live far from this. But it's similar. Do you know what's going to be done when Tempehue gets razed and rebuilt? Is it, is it going to offer any opportunities for this land that would help?
The
No?
The school board has been asked about this property many, many times. Their response is always, we're not interested at this time.
I, you know
Interest is low.
And I, I have heard about this property since I was a lad. So I'm familiar with it. Was a racquetball court one time. And I understand the community's concerns. They, they've had to live with it. But I think if you're moving in the direction of a school, you're, you're moving in direction of alignment. And to me, it makes a lot of sense. So I don't think I have a problem with this.
Robert, it seems like a few years, maybe it's been a year ago, we passed a, people were going to put some duplexes or something on that ground, just to the west.
The Planning Commission
Does that ever?
They recommended approval. The Planning Commission recommended approval of that zone change. The city council did not allow that zone change to occur.
Okay. I was just wondering about if that was going to add more traffic, if it would go forward, but I guess it won't.
Yeah. So, so the zoning of that infill property
Right.
In between the
Seminary and the
The seminary building, this is the school, this is an infill piece of property, remains public facilities. Which, if the, if the private school were on that piece of property, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Any other, any other comments or questions?
I just feel like this is a compatible land use. We're not asking for permission to run a school, which is ironic, because schools are in the middle of neighborhoods all the time. But this is actually zoned for the, a more demanding use. And if I'm not mistaken, isn't it built up into the hillside, so there's not even a neighbor really adjacent on the east side?
Yeah, there's a significant grade change
So
Right here.
Traffic is already an issue on that road, and I don't feel like 20 trips twice a day is really going to be a detriment to the, the goals of what we're trying to do, which is a use that's already allowed. And then it now gives us more review powers over the use that's already allowed in other capacities. So we can't review a school, a public school that would come in there. But because it's private, we now have the right to review it, and they have the right to be there. So I feel like there's plenty of controls on it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, located right there next to Tempehue, I think that's a perfect location. And hearing about the number of students and cars, I don't see that it has that significant of an impact on the neighborhood. I had four kids go to Tempehue, and that was horrendous enough for me. So I don't want to, I don't think that having that, those 20 cars at offset times is that significant of an impact. So I don't, I don't have a problem with that school being there.
We could also address the concern that was raised by the neighborhood chair about parents dropping their kids off in the cul-de-sac across the street and having them run in, if that truly is happening. When they come back for their conditional use permit, which they would have to do if this is approved, we could make sure that that is addressed at that time. Or the staff could make sure that is suggested, anyway.
Anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, just one quick question. Since it is citywide, is it foreseeable that this would be, I mean, it's so limited. The chance of this coming up again is pretty remote. But is it appropriate? I mean, we would still consider that in other areas, and
Yeah, I think that's one reason that we are suggesting the citywide approach, is because we felt that this is a land use that could be applicable in, in other PO zones, the Stevens Henneger example. Those are, those are uses, or even like a University of Phoenix type of situation, that are customarily designed for those professional office-type zones. And this would just allow an additional use of those properties.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation for an ordinance text amendment to the professional office zone, section 14.16.020, to allow private educational services as a conditional use, with the queuing spelling the way it should be. And there we go.
All right. Is there a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. It is unanimous.
Can we move with our feet?
Yes. Is there a motion to move with our feet?